Good morning. It is 10:00 AM on December 20, 2022. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Plan of the United States of America and to the government of the United States of America and to the citizens of the Constitution of the United States of America.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adopt today's agenda?
So moved.
Second, moved and seconded, headens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. All of these guys have been waiting for me. Okay, anyone who's wishing to make public comment on anything other than the accessory dwelling item later on in the agenda, you can come up to the podium or raise your hand on Zoom. And seeing no one will close public comment number one and move on to consideration of minutes from December 13, 2022.
I move approval of minutes as presented.
Second, headens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Consideration of personnel actions.
I move approval of personnel actions as presented.
Second, headens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Uh, consideration of claims.
I move approval of claims as presented.
Second, headens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Consent agenda.
I move approval of consent agenda items as listed.
Second, headens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Now we are at, sorry, I keep bumping this microphone. Uh, public hearing items for, aren't we at additional items?
Is that a public hearing? Isn't about, sorry, okay, sorry.
That's okay. We're moving so fast, I'm confused.
Well, it flipped over. Part of it's on one page and part flipped to the other.
Um, first consideration of ordinance 303, amending Chapter 85, general provisions, provisions and definitions, and Chapter 86, district requirements of story county land development regulations. Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, so this is an ordinance to allow accessory dwelling units, and I thought a good place to start would be what does that mean? So, an accessory dwelling unit is a second dwelling on a property that is smaller than the existing dwelling. It can be attached to the home as an addition. It could be a manufactured home placed on the property. It could be a converted pole barn, or it could be its own, you know, stick-built, smaller dwelling. So there's different configurations allowed. The main goal is to provide an accessible alternative option for members of family, tenants, caretakers, that's, it's accessory to the main unit. Um, so we're not changing the character of, you know, the rural area or neighborhoods or what have you, but we're allowing some flexibility. Um, the C2C plan and the Story County Housing Study both kind of allude to the need for these. Um, I think the housing study explicitly states that we need to consider allowing accessory dwelling units. The C2C plan also has goals to plan for, um, a variety of housing types that still reinforce our rural character. Um, so this has actually been on our work program since 2017, probably. Um, based on the C2C plan, and again, I think what you see up on the graphic, you see is ADUs are kind of the intersection of allowing some flexibility for alternative affordable housing types in the unincorporated area while not impacting the rural character of the area, creating a feel that there's more housing or more density in that area. Um, so the basic premise of the ordinance is, one, we don't allow these right now. So allowing them in most residential zoning districts in the A1 agricultural zoning district. We are allowing them with some requirements in place to make sure they're accessory to the main house and that they're not fragmenting ag land or natural resources and that they're safe. So, we need a separate 911 address, we need a permit, they have to submit a permit for wastewater generation as well to make sure if we're hooking into an existing septic system, it's adequate, or it needs its own adequate septic system. Um, we are also proposing that the ADU meet all setback requirements and be limited to 800 square feet in size. That includes basements. Um, we are requiring that if you're converting an accessory structure, for instance, a garage or a pole barn, that you take the overhead door off and make that a wall. Um, if somebody's going to live inside on the other side of it, and make sure that there's at least one window for every bedroom. We don't have a building code, so we felt that's important. Um, we also are requiring that there's only one ADU per parcel, so you can have a main house and one accessory dwelling unit, but not two or three accessory dwelling units. And then we're also proposing a requirement that the ADU can't be further than 200 feet from the main dwelling, just to make sure it's, you know, compact and in the same vicinity as the dwelling, so we're not impacting additional area. Some things we considered that we found would be inconsistent with the goals of our C2C plan, the housing study and the ordinance would be simply allowing second dwellings without any size limit. This is something that Boone County does. Um, they do have a requirement that the people living in the second unit have to be related, but there's no maximum on the size. So a lot of the time, what you would see there is you've got an existing farm home and somebody's moving, a child is moving, you know, um, to live with the parents on the same property. And so then simply a larger home is built. And that's not what we're targeting here. We're trying to incentivize smaller, affordable, alternative options instead of just second dwellings. Um, we're also, um, considered not having a limit on how far you could be from the main home. But again, we feel that, you know, 200, a 200-foot radius is about three acres. So it's a pretty good size area that you could cite a home on. Most homes can be cited on one acre. We have that requirement in the A1 agricultural and AR districts. It's a pretty typical lot size you'd see in the unincorporated area. And again, it's just to ensure, one, we're not fragmenting additional farmland. But as we get into larger sized parcels too, if you've got 40 acres, you're not citing your ADU, you know, half a mile or a quarter of a mile from the existing dwelling, which would be essentially skirting our subdivision requirements and creating a second home. We did send, um, notice to be published in the newspaper and we did a social media post. Uh, we received some comments. The main concerns were that 800 square feet was too small. Um, that basements shouldn't be counted in the gross size. Um, and the 200 square feet was too restrictive as well. Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission did hear some of these comments and their discussion was mainly centered on how flexible do we want to be versus what's the impact on the county's rural character if we do create more flexibility in some of those requirements? And so they ended up recommending, um, the ordinance as proposed by staff. Um, they did ask us to comment on some of those requirements. So for instance, the 200 square, the 200-foot um, distance requirement. Um, again, this is about a three-acre area. If you, if you think about a dwelling as being the center of a circle, having a 200-foot radius extending around it is, is, is about three acres. Um, we picked this 200-foot distance based on, we had an intern look at aerial imagery of farmsteads and measure how far accessory buildings typically were and how large, you know, the, the windbreak area was from, from the dwelling, um, to come up with that requirement. Um, again, this minimizes impact on agricultural land, natural areas, and ensures we're, we're not um, changing the, the, how the, a density of the area appears. Um, the 800-square-foot size limit, that was based on peer counties. We did a survey of other counties. We also looked at national trends. That's the most common size limit nationally as well. Um, but I think what we're trying to do here is make sure that this accessory dwelling unit will be accessory to the majority of existing dwellings in Story County. I know that there are some very large dwellings in, in unincorporated areas. Um, but there are also, you know, 1920s four squares that were built on farms that are 800 square feet main level, 800 square foot second level, 1600 square foot. There's post-war farmsteads as well that are, you know, just over a thousand square feet. So how do we pick a size to make sure that this is truly going to be accessory to most homes? That's, that's where we landed. Um, I think the other part of the 800-square-foot limit um, is that, you know, we did consider going bigger, allowing a larger limit. There are some places that do that, but a common factor when you go larger is also having a second requirement that the ADU can be no larger than the primary dwelling or can be no larger than 50% of the primary dwelling. And, and while staff appreciates that these are pretty common and allow more flexibility, we were concerned that these would be regressive and inequitable for folks that had smaller homes, that would then limit them to a smaller ADU. And, and how do we balance the need for folks that may already have a smaller home to then only be limited to 400 square feet of an ADU? And so that's why we landed on this middle ground of 800 square feet. And in terms of basements, um, we are counting that towards that 800 square feet. If you put a basement in, we, you know, don't think that houses with basements will be a very common type of ADU. We have received applications for these from folks that don't know, we don't allow them. Usually they're attached or a manufactured home. Um, just because the costs of construction of those is, is less than, you know, a new stick-built dwelling in the backyard. Um, Lynn County also counts basements towards the square footage requirement. So this is similar to what other counties do, and that's because we don't have a permit for finishing a basement. So if you allow an 800-square-foot ADU and an 800-square-foot basement, and we don't have a permit for finishing that basement, you finish it, all of a sudden you're at 1600 square feet, which doesn't meet the requirements of our ordinance and is about the same size as a typical dwelling you might see.
Can I interrupt you real quick?
Yeah.
If I don't forget my thought. Um, so i- if we just didn't count basements at all.
Yeah.
Any, in, in, in any of it, then the basement wouldn't impact the total square foot if we're not counting the total square foot. Feet. So then it wouldn't be a violation of the ordinance, even if it's finished.
Right, but it would be, um, it'd create a situation where you've got a pretty large accessory dwelling unit, was our concern. Um, yeah.
Okay.
If you want it to, you know, uh, reduce the size and allow basements or, you know, create an overall cap that was less than 1600 square feet, that might be more appropriate, but at 1600 square feet, we're really looking at a full-sized dwelling. Um, and we also found that there's plenty of homes that don't have basements. Um, you know, the common new type of housing we're seeing in Story County are these shouses, they're shophouses, they're pole barn houses. And what you can do is put in a safe room, or you can build a shelter under the slab of the garage. Um, we have many manufactured home communities that don't have shelters. We also have many apartments in the county that don't have shelters. Um, and so I understand that there's a safety concern, but the other part of that is you could have a 600-square-foot ADU and a 200-square-foot partial basement. So it's not completely prohibitive, right, to get to that 800? Um, or you could just simply have a 400-square-foot ADU, which we do actually have one of those. So it's not an unheard-of size either. Um, so the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission was approval, um, as presented by staff. And I'm happy to take any questions. Um, this is the first hearing and we'd set the second hearing for January 3rd.
Supervisor headens. Um, I do have a couple of questions and I may have more after the public hearing as well. Um, so I understand that you looked at other counties and stuff for the size limit. Now, I have heard that some counties are looking at increasing, um, that size. I don't know if you've had conversations with them or what they're looking at potentially increasing from that 800-square-foot limit to a greater limit. I was also looking that I think some, and I didn't have a chance to look at all the counties that you have or whatever. Um, uh, that some have like an 800-square-foot or 30% of the primary dwelling, whichever is greater. So you're, you know, going up to that potentially, that 800 square, square feet or might be a little bit. I'm just trying to understand the calculations portion a little bit more from, for the 800 square feet that you, that you put in. It does just seem small to me. I understand what you're trying to do in the character of the community and yeah, I don't want a dwelling to be right next to the exact same size, because I think that takes away from the intent of what you're trying to do.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, again, on the, um, you know, the greater option with the percentage-based requirement, we know that's common. We just felt that it was unfair. Um, for someone that has an 800-square-foot home, you know, that was the size of the first home I bought. Um, to then be limited to, you know, no more than 50% of 400-square-foot ADU, whereas someone with a 3,000-square-foot home, which is another common size in Story County, would then be able to do a much larger ADU. So we just didn't want to introduce that kind of regressive scale into the ordinance.
Now, I, um, kind of along the side of, of, I had heard that Lynn County, that they do have the 800-square-foot, but they're looking at increasing that? Have you had any conversations with them or know what they are looking at?
Yes.
I tried to reach out to them and did not.
Yeah.
Holiday week is going to be one of the people.
They've had the, uh, 800-square-foot requirement for a number of years. Um, their Board of Supervisors feels that, given the, you know, inflation economics, um, they, they've been directed to look at how allowing a larger size would, would help that. Um, but they haven't, you know, written anything yet or made a recommendation to staff. They've been directed to look at, and I think.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I have a parade at the moment.
Okay. Um, and then can you just, um, explain the why no more than one per parcel?
Mm-hmm. Um, again, I think it's just about allowing a little bit of flexibility, but not too much so that we've got multiple units on a parcel. Um, that would be, again, out of character for what we normally see. You know, we don't really have many duplexes in Story County, for instance. It's not a common housing type. Um, certainly there are some cities, you know, in California that might allow multiple units per parcel, but it just didn't seem to fit with the, the character of what we're, we're working with in the unincorporated areas.
And then how far are windbreaks typically from the primary dwelling?
Yeah, so again, you know, a typical lot size is about an acre. So if you center, you know, your house in the middle of a parcel, you know, 200 feet.
Is there a mechanism for any exceptions from that 200 feet? And I only ask that depending where the house may be set at, I'm thinking of the landscape, you know, but if you've got a creek that's running right through, it might go, you might need to go a little bit beyond that.
Sure. So we wrote a mechanism into the ordinance that if due to location of a septic system that was impractical, it could be located outside of that area, but as close as possible. Um, there is of course, a variance process that one could seek.
Sure.
Um, as well.
Okay.
But what we've got built into the ordinance is based on septic.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, ready for me to open the public hearing? Okay. So we will go ahead and open the public hearing. Um, and then is the microphone turned on at the podium? Do you know? Would you check up for me? Thank you. So first up, we have Liesel Danielson.
All right. Morning, morning. Liesel Danielson, 2981 South Dakota Avenue. Um, so right off the bat, I would advocate that if the existing dwelling is smaller, that it become the accessory dwelling and a larger home could be built as the primary dwelling. I think that's a good option. That takes care of the equity situation. My family has a tradition of growing up in the country and growing up near our grandparents. My mom grew up next door to her grandparents. I grew up across the road from my grandparents. Now my children are growing up next door to their grandparents. I understand this arrangement isn't for everyone, but I also know how priceless it is for those that do seek this dream. I'm here to advocate for the larger families. My mom grew up in a family with six kids in a house that was just over 1,500 square feet with one bathroom. And in addition, they had a basement with a shower. I have six children, so I know how valuable a little more space can be. So I would say people don't fit into boxes and neither do families, but they might fit into a house if you give them enough room.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Alex Christensen.
Alex Christensen, 2984 South Dakota Avenue. Um, accessory dwellings are a very important housing option. Those of us who prefer, prefer a rural lifestyle have very limited options. Affordable rural housing in Story County is practically non-existent. To make matters worse, the City of Ames and the Fringe Plan pretty much eliminate any new rural lot development around the city. This is why this ordinance is so important. The problem is the restrictions being proposed in the ordinance make it useless for the majority of people. Families come in all forms and sizes. Rural lots are generally much larger than city lots and also come in all shapes and sizes. The staff report for the ordinance states that housing is built in a way that responds to residents' needs and reflects their voices and experiences. Without removing the restrictions to more closely match neighboring Boone County, this ordinance is ignoring the needs, voices and experiences of rural Story County residents. To match Boone County, remove the square foot size restrictions, so accessory dwellings are an option for all rural residents. Residents should not be penalized for having a family. Basements should not count towards any square footage limitations. They don't increase the footprint of the house and are often more efficient from an energy and construction standpoint. They also provide for laundry, storage, and most critically, a tornado and a racial shelter. Eliminate the requirement that accessory dwellings be placed within a certain distance from the primary residence. We found no other counties that had this requirement. Rural lots are large. In addition to someone not wanting to live within shouting distance of their parents, an ordinance without flexibility could force a house to be built in a far less desirable location, which could negatively impact natural areas. Thank you and everyone stay safe with their holiday travels.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Linda Upadall.
Hi, I'm Linda Upadall, 2983 South Dakota Avenue. I don't have a formal, um, statement like my, uh, neighbors have. Um, but I do not believe that we should be, um, uh, restricted with the, the accessible building. Um, that it be, only be up to eight, eight hundred square feet. Um, I live in a closer 3,000-square-foot home now. If my, my son would be the one that would be building onto the property, or we would let him have our dwelling and we would be going into the new building. Um, and, um, I think for an upcoming family, 800 square feet is not big enough for two parents and two children to live under the same roof. I don't think I would have been able to handle that. We're also in a situation where, um, my husband is a kidney transplant. I have limitations with my walking. I have foot drop and whatever. And our son, um, helps take care of our property now. So in order for him to be able to, him and his wife and any children that he will have down the line, you know, there should be consideration for the type of home that he would want to live in. Or in our, if we retire into the smaller home, we should be able to have, you know, an accessible home where we can um, enjoy it also. Um, we love living in the country. Um, I don't feel that the City of Ames or a county should tell us, you know, what we should do on our property and how we should handle it. I know that there's, um, you know, restrictions of, with different things that we would need to adhere to, but, um, telling us that we had to live in a smaller home than what we would be accustomed to, I don't think that's fair. I mean, we are the landowners and for someone to tell us, you know, how we have to live different from what we've been accustomed to living, I don't think it's fair. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kim Christensen.
You knew eventually it'd hear from me. The, uh, again, I think the accelerate, uh, accessory dwelling is an excellent opportunity for the county to help the rural residents of Story County, specifically Story County, because there are a lot of restrictions with the Ames being kind of tyrannical on how they want to be able to control things around their cities and maybe other cities in, in Story County as well. I think this is really a big deal and I'm probably, I would like to see it maybe slowed up. Let's talk more about all the different options. If you start to control the, uh, by the lot size, where it goes, all of those kinds of things, you, you begin to take away the number of people that are going to really be interested in even utilizing this. If you don't want anybody to build these accessible, uh, accessory dwellings, then make it like it is. 800 feet, you won't have any built. And what will be built will only be built for temporary use, you know, if they, if, if, if that. Uh, but if you really want to expand the tax base, the ability for, uh, the residents of Story County to interconnect with family members or friends that might want to live with them, the restriction on this particular situation is that you can't sell the property without selling both houses. You can't split lots and in a lot of the areas around, uh, the area, and you maybe wouldn't want it. And that's a real reason for the, you know, the accessory dwelling. Accessory dwellings are very popular, a very big deal in Minnesota now, uh, Wisconsin, uh, my hometown and up and, and you know, and uh, Wisconsin have been doing this for years. Um, if you are going to want to try to get something put together now, I would say from a standpoint of, uh, square footage, you should have a 1,500-foot square foot and not living area. What is living area? Does that include the deck? Does that include a screened-in porch? Does that include a three, the three-season porch? Or does it include just where you actually live on a day-to-day, every day? So I say, let's use footprint. Okay, I say a 1,500-square-foot footprint and you can go down. Who, what difference does it make if there's a basement or not? Is that, who's going to see it? It's only there for the benefit of the people who are actually investing the money in the property. You're asking the property owners to invest this. This isn't a government housing project where somebody else is going to invest in it. This is the people that, like Linda, who's going to be investing their money into this, and then they're going to be there to pay taxes, which Washington Township appreciates. And so would a lot of other townships in this, in this county as well. As a trustee, I think it's my obligation to make sure all the trustees in this, in the county knows about the possibility of how good this law could be for them, so they could expand. You could bring back children from California who can work off away from the, from the Google, uh, limelight and be able to do their work here and actually be along with their parents and, you know, but you can't do it in housing that they're not accustomed to. And you can't tell them what they're accustomed to, because they're the ones who make that decision. 200-foot thing, my lot is, is about 2,600 feet long. You know, the best place for the house is what I decide is the best place for that house to go. Not 200 feet, not across the creek, not here, not there, not what, what the planning decides it is. It should be where I want to invest the money and, and put it into. It should be where I want to invest the money and put it into. As long as it's safe, as long as it's environmentally oriented, those things are all good laws. But when you start telling me that I can't live in 800, I have to live in 800 feet versus 1,600 feet, that's pretty restricted. And all that will do is just stop it. No one's going to invest it. I'm not going to invest money in, in something that isn't going to work for me. And you begin to, the, the closing down, the economic closing down of the county from a residential standpoint, and that's a really big deal. It's a big deal to the townships who are losing tax base as it is. So I would say, I would like to see you either stop the thing right now and let's get a lot of input into this thing on what the people really want, not what four or five staff people want. And let's really talk about it. Or if you're going to do it, make it 1,500 feet as far as the footprint and allow to have an upper floor and a, and, and a basement and get rid of that 200 feet thing. So, thank you very much again. Merry Christmas and do travel safely. I agree.
You too. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make public comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom. Okay, we will close the public hearing.
Amelia, could you talk a little bit difference of the ADUs in that if I wanted to partition off some of my land just to build a house? Yes, I'm sorry. Usually I lean neck.
Do you want to ask a question again to make sure it caught you?
Yeah, so my question again, I apologize for everyone to hear, is I was asking if Amelia could explain the difference between the ADUs and then if you had to partition off some land or just building a second home on land that you own.
Yeah, so again, the goal of this ordinance isn't just to create more housing. It's really to create a pretty niche housing type. We do have options, you know, A1 agricultural zoning district. You can build on a parcel that's 35 acres or greater in size. And there's a few exceptions to that that would allow parcelling off of a farmstead or another existing home if it has a lower agricultural value. In some instances, that could create a second lot. It's not necessarily possible in all instances, but that's the typical, you know, thing we see in the rural areas. Think of a 40 acre parcel and then carving off, you know, an acre for, for a dwelling. Is that kind of answer?
It does. And they can, they can only do that once. Is that correct? So carving out some of that parcel?
In, so there's a, there's a process that we've had since 2012 called the residential parcel subdivision process. And you, if you have an existing home, you can create a second lot from that parcel through that process. Yeah. But without a rezone. It's a whole different process of multiple lots.
Yeah, and not allowed in the fringe area.
Yeah, right. Well, again, you, there's just an amendment process you'd need to go through if you wanted to do a residential parcel subdivision in the fringe area or a larger subdivision to the rural residential expansion area. That's what's been proposed and that's kind of how it currently works as well. An amendment process that the cooperators would, would consider. And, and then if it was successful, you'd be able to create a second lot or, or multiple lots. I, I will just say, you know, this has been on our work program since 2017. And I think the previous director and myself have been very hesitant to bring this forward because we do not have a building code. And how do we ensure that this housing is safe and this makes sense? You know, the housing study said we were also to look at adopting a building code. And so what you see before you, it is limited, but it's, it's limited to the extent that we feel it's reasonable while not going to be creating, you know, larger issues with having multiple units on a property. I, I can't tell you, you know, we just had a code enforcement case a couple of weeks ago where we found, you know, a pole barn that has electric cords run out to it. Folks are living in it. There's no heat. There's a shed that somebody else is living in. I, I'm trying to avoid those kinds of issues by having this as a really limited ordinance, given the fact that we don't have a property maintenance or building code.
Can you help me understand how this would prevent that from happening?
It's just very limited, right? So again, we're not going to be creating a lot of new accessory dwelling units. I do understand that. So hopefully just in, just in the limited amount we'll be creating is, is going to prevent some larger problems until we are able to, you know, more fully consider what standards a residential property should be in order to be safe for its occupants.
I understand that. I do have a bit of concern with an 800 square foot limitation. I do find that to be, at least for me, I think that's quite small. You know, I know people generally when they move out of their homes and they downsize into an apartment, it may be 800, 800 to, you know, 1,000. I've seen some at like North Crest or, or Green Hills that might be 8, 900 up to 1,300, 1,400 square feet. So there's some variety in there. This is looking, in my opinion, is a little different because you're wanting to stay in your homestead and having your family come and help you. And I'm just trying to envision 800 square feet with family. And, and I understand where you're, exactly where you're coming from with wanting to have safety standards and stuff. I guess for me, part of me would like to see you investigate a little bit more kind of what you even kind of mentioned, the economics of inflation where that's at. Seeing a little bit more what some of the other, I, I know you've reached out to some of the other communities, but if they are also looking at this time too, of potentially increasing that square footage, what that might possibly, might possibly be. I mean, I'm not saying that we wouldn't land back on 800 square feet. And I know you've done some of this, but when they're already having the conversations out there, for me, I'd personally like to have a little bit more information.
Sure. I, I did speak with Lynn County, so I don't know what other information though I can bring back. So if you want to go up to 1,200 and include, you know, basements still is counting towards that gross, gross square footage, I, I really don't see much issue. With that size, when we're getting up to 1,600, I mean, that is a typical full-size dwelling. Right? 1,000, you know, yeah. So if you want me to bring back information, I'd just like to have a little bit more direction on.
What information?
Yeah, yeah.
So didn't you look much at like 1,000 or 1,200 square feet at all?
Yeah, we did. And just, you know, thinking about what, what our peer counties are doing. Sure. And national trends landed on the 800 and not, you know, I, I think we try to start off small and, and see how that goes rather than, you know.
Right. And I did look up what is your American Association of Planners. I did look at that. I looked at AARP. I think the American Association of Planners had said they're rated at about 800 square feet. I thought AARP and I could be wrong. I was trying to pull that up quick. And of course, when I'm looking for rate, what I want to read, I can't find it. They're the ones I thought that I read had either 800 square feet or taking that like 30% of the size of the house. And it said whichever was larger.
Yeah, yeah. And again, the percentage based, I'm a little uncomfortable with. But if you just wanted to raise it up to, you know, 1,000 and count a basement or 1,200 and count the basement towards that, I'd be not totally opposed or concerned. But I do think that the distance from the existing dwelling is important. And just having some sort of limitation on, you know, how we count levels, basement for second altogether.
Right, right, right.
So if we wanted to play with the size, I think that's an area we could work on.
Your thoughts Supervisor Faisal?
Yeah, I had a, I, it just floated right away, so I'm trying to grab it again. Because I had a question that I'm trying to remember because I didn't write it down. So what would be, what, what is the reasoning for not allowing the accessory dwelling to become the primary dwelling and the original dwelling be the accessory?
Again, we've, Story County has seen a lot of residential development, you know? We're a growing county and I don't think the comprehensive plan nor the housing study found we needed to really incentivize a lot more of that kind of rural new development. Like new homes versus creating flexibility for just smaller homes in order to maintain, you know, the rural area. And, you know, in some of our more developed areas, for instance, the two mile area outside of Ames, how do we strike a balance between what the rural area is supposed to look like? And it's already so dense and developed and preventing it from becoming more and more suburban.
The 800 square feet with some of the other counties, and I apologize again. I just didn't get a chance to look as much or connect with you prior. Did they include the basement, a basement level?
Yes, Lynn County does in that.
So they include 800 square feet in, in their total calculation? I want to make sure that I'm getting my question.
They do. And, and any additional floor space. We didn't include decks. We don't include the garage. But any space that could be finished or is finished into living space, yes, that's, that would be counted. So again, if you wanted to stick with that, but just increase the size a little bit, I think that's a compromise.
And I, I understand that we're, we're trying to create a different type of housing option too with this. But this, this accessory dwelling unit would not be something that necessarily would be like a rental option.
Yeah, it could be.
But is it likely to be, I guess is my question. It could be.
Yeah, we've had, you know, in code enforcement, we've had a couple, we found that our rentals, yes. Okay. Converted garage spaces, spaces above garages that have been rented out to students, families. Yeah.
Okay.
I, I didn't want to tie it just to relations. I don't like defining family, right?
So, yeah, yeah, absolutely. I appreciate that. Yeah. I, I have to agree. I, I feel like 800 square feet is small. And that was, that was roughly the size of my first home. It was a townhouse and I had a basement, which was a godsend. So, and, and not, you know, the shelter is absolutely important, but really it was where my kids could go down and play and I kept my laundry and, you know, all the things, right? That we value basements for.
So are, where are you like with, I guess you shouldn't say where are you? Maybe I'll just make a motion and we can have a discussion. I'll do it.
Okay.
Is I'd make the motion that we allow up to 1,000 square feet with a basement. Just for discussion right now, because I, I moved out, yes.
And that would be the basement included in the 1,000 square feet? Am I following you?
Yes, yes. Okay. Yes, basement included in the 1,000 square feet.
Okay, so I'll second for sake of discussion.
Yeah, just for discussion. And I put that out there just because we're seeing to be 800.
Yeah.
Like, let's look at the.
I did second, second, for sake of discussion.
I felt if I was getting into, how are you feeling on something, it needed to be a motion.
I, so this is, this is how I'm feeling right now, is that it is so expensive to build and it's so expensive to acquire land that if you want whatever you're building to be adequate, enough space, right? You don't, I would not want to build, and, and we talk about this like with the, the Justice Center, right? We don't want to add on a little bit to then have to add on, you know, we've already outgrown it by the time we move into it. And it just, even 1,000 doesn't quite feel large enough. Like I would feel better with 1,200. But I also don't know, you know, from a planning standpoint, what that, what the impact of that would be.
I think 1,200 with basement included would be 600 main level, you know, 600 basement, if you have a full basement. That's what that would look like.
So I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, you know, I think that in that configuration, I feel like it would still be considered an accessory dwelling. Much larger than that, I think as staff, we would need to consider if we're really just allowing second dwellings on properties and what are the ramifications of that versus this more limited ordinance. But 1,000 with a basement, 1,200 with a basement, those seem still accessory to me. Yeah.
Oh, sure. Andrea, thank you. We have an ADU application that's just on hold right now. They're waiting for the ordinance to see what happens. And it is for an in-law suite and it is 600 square feet, no basement. It is a kitchen, living room, one bedroom, bathroom and laundry that is attached to a garage at a dwelling. We've had other requests, you know, where someone just wants the caretaker for their special needs child to live above the garage. So that's the type of request we've been getting in the lead up to this ordinance. Not requests for, I need, you know, my, my entire family to live on the property in addition to the family that's already living on the property. Those aren't the requests that we, that we typically get for people who have questions about ADUs.
Yeah, I think the other common type is we've got a grandmother that cares for her grandchildren during the day. And so they've placed a manufactured home that's about 450 square feet on the property. That is allowed currently in A1 agricultural, but if the person passes away, it does have to be removed. So we kind of want it to move away from that too with this ordinance. You know, we do have a lot. We had recently, you know, a son whose dad lived in an older mobile home on the property. And that's been allowed to an A1 agricultural and that was about 800 square feet. So what we've been seeing are, are smaller and, and really kind of limited to caretaking situations versus larger families.
Well, and I think that's why I asked my question, the difference between the dwelling and kind of dividing off the land for another home, a larger home.
Yep. Yeah, you know, one of the calls we got in the ordinance, this was interesting, was, you know, a gentleman that wants to build a house, an ADU for his, his father and thought the size limit was pretty restrictive. But I, I did point out that he does have a buildable lot next door that they could put a house on as well. So there are often options if you want that larger size.
Um, so would you would you be willing to entertain an amendment to your motion?
What is your amendment?
Um, up to twelve hundred.
I'd be open to that. Yeah, I'm just trying to think of um you know, yeah, I'm just kind of thinking out loud, sorry. That'd be all inclusive, right? So that would
Right.
If you had a basement or not of going up to
Right.
Twelve hundred to be allowed.
Right.
I'd be open to that. I've, I've been
And, and there is um, um, there's a process for if the two hundred feet from the original isn't, does not make sense for some reason.
Yes. Again, if it's due to your septic system, we've got a process built into the ordinance that allows you to sit as close as possible. But avoid getting too close to that system. Otherwise, we have a variance process that goes to our board of adjustment.
Mm hmm.
And you'd have to show basically that there's no there's no way you can cite it within two hundred feet. That would be the burden. So it's not the most, it's not that's just desirable. It's that it's impossible.
Sure.
Mm hmm.
So were you making a
Uh, yeah, I'll make, I will formally make that amendment to your motion, offer that amendment to your motion.
And I say yes to that.
Okay.
So the full motion then would be for a up to twelve hundred square foot
accessory.
Accessory dwelling. That would include be inclusive of a basement. Was that, is that what you need done? And that's what I would move.
And to request staff to make that change and then come back to us on second consideration or are there other things that?
I would, I would say to make that change and come back on second consideration, which would be January third.
Yeah, that right, January third.
Okay.
For discussion at that for consideration at that time.
Oh. Okay. I would second that motion. I, Basil, I.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I think we're next too.
I think you are. Uh, additional items.
Right?
Yeah, discussion and consideration of resolution twenty-three dash fifty Oak Bend that one residential parcel subdivision.
Yep, thank you. So we received an application for residential parcel subdivision just outside of Huxley city limits. Tyler and Courtney Lowey are the applicants. Um, Pamela Larson is the owner. Um, and that is her daughter and son-in-law who are applying to split off some land so that they can build a dwelling um in close proximity to her. It is at five five seven oh three Oak Bend Road. That's less than a quarter mile outside of Huxley City's limit, city limits in Palestine Township. Um, and the districts are listed there, A one ag, Huxley Fire and Ambulance, Ballard Community School District. Location, the gold star on the map, so it is um, just very, very close to, to Huxley. Um, in between Huxley and Cambridge there. That is a subject property highlighted in blue. Um, it is, I believe, at this point in time about, um, let's see here. It is about seven gross acres. Um, this post-split would create a flag lot. Um, and you can see just to the north of the property that is Ballard Creek there. You can see the mapped flood plain. So I did want you to kind of visualize where Ballard Creek is. That will come into play later. It is not on the subject property, but the subject property does drain to Ballard Creek. Um, so proposed lot one, as I mentioned, is a flag lot, meaning that, you know, the driveway comes up that part to the west there and then the house would be on the northern portion of the lot. Um, and that would be about four point seven four net acres. They would like to split off a little bit over two net acres for the second dwelling to be built on. And you can see that there on the southeast corner um of the parcel. So lot one and lot two is what they're proposing. I just wanted to show you some images of the topography on the parcel. Um, the image on the left-hand side is the subject property as a whole. And then on the right-hand side is just that zoomed in on the northern, the northern half of it. Um, it has some very steep slopes, especially on the northern part of lot one, some of them over fifty percent grade. And they do drain to ravines that then flow into Ballard Creek. Um, so we have, we'll get into some recommended conditions. We have on the approval of the plat to, you know, better protect those steep slopes and the trees that are on those um, from, from encroachment from development. Alternative compliance, we do discourage flag lots. Um, it's just, you know, not, not typically the most efficient use of land. Um, and so the applicants have submitted an alternative compliance request that the board can grant uh, with approval of the subdivision plat to allow them to build that flag lot. Um, you know, they've mentioned, you know, this helps them to preserve trees on the existing property by having that flag lot. It creates another lot with a buildable area outside of the trees for that second dwelling. Um, staff does agree with that, but to, you know, really fully accomplish other goals of the ordinance to better protect those slopes and significant trees, we are recommending conditions. Um, again, related to the slopes. What can and can't be built on them, how much impact from accessory uses um can happen on those slopes. Because it is a, is a concern from an erosion control standpoint, um, if those were disturbed or deforested for any reason. So I'll kind of go through these. So critical or protected slopes, those have a grade of twenty for six, twenty-six percent or greater. Um, so we are asking for a buffer from the top of those slopes on lot one and lot two if they wanted to say put up a Morton building after they build the house, something like that. Um, protected slopes with a grade over thirty-five percent, so that is getting quite steep, um, can only be um, shall not be impacted for any reason. Critical slopes, those can be impacted, you know, just for installation of utilities. Or if they had to have an access point to get onto the property, that's not really the situation here, we don't believe, but um, that's one of the conditions. Development on steep slopes, so between fifteen percent grade and twenty-five percent grade. Those would just require um, a site plan developed by a licensed engineer. Again, we don't have a building code in the county. Then this particular instance, it'd be good to have an engineer come up with a re-vegetation plan, um, talk about suitability of the site, that kind of thing. And then lastly, any significant tree removed for development would be replaced at a ratio of one to one. Um, the applicants are aware of these conditions. They have read through them and they have agreed that, that they're fine with these as written. Then we have one additional condition on driveway access. The county engineer reviewed the subdivision plat and found there are two existing field entrances where lot two is proposed to go. These field entrances and the existing driveway, they don't meet that three hundred foot separation distance. So he is okay with allowing them to use one field entrance for the driveway to lot two, but the other field entrance needs to be removed. Again, because of separation distance issues. So that is a, that's another condition on approval of the plat that we are recommending is that they must remove the second entrance. We have here just the applicable regulations for residential parcel subdivisions from the ordinance. Um, I believe you both are familiar with these, but this subdivision meets all of, all of these regulations. Comments from the public. We did mail notification letters to property owners within a quarter mile, which I believe is about fifty-seven properties just because it is so close to Huxley. We did not get any formal comments. I did place a sign on the property on December fourteenth. That also did not generate any comments from passersby. Um, Huxley and Cambridge. Huxley approved subdivision at one of their city council meetings and Cambridge waived their review of the subdivision. So analysis, they've met all the requirements. Um, we do recommend that you approve their alternative compliance request provided that our recommended conditions are also approved with the plat. Um, as I mentioned, county engineer has some concerns about the field entrances, so would like one removed. Um, and then I have a list of all the conditions together on the very last slide, if you want to see them again. Um, but otherwise, our recommended alternative is number two, that the county board supervisors recommend resolution twenty-three dash five zero with conditions as presented. And then the conditions on the last slide, if you want to look at those again.
So does the applicant know about the recommendation or the, the engineers?
Yes, they're aware of that one also. Yep.
Mm hmm.
And they've, they've picked out which field entrance they want to use, I believe, so they're fine with that.
Any questions?
I move that, uh, we approve resolution twenty-three dash fifty, the Oak Bend flat one residential parcel subdivision as presented with conditions.
Second. Headens.
I.
Basil, I.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have discussion and consideration proposed, which this is the Amelia Show, isn't it? Um, propose, proposed received for property cleanup, demolition of structures and debris removal at five, six, three, one, four, one hundred and seventy Street in Ames.
Yes, so this is a code enforcement case. Um, we had sought proposals to clean up the property. We only got one back and it was, it was pretty high. So we're asking the board to reject all proposals. Um, we do reserve that, right? When we, we put out our request for proposals. Um, we've worked with a review committee, including the facilities management director, Joby Brugden, Kimberly Grandetti, environmental health director and county sanitarian, and also we've, I've been bouncing ideas off of Ethan Anderson, assistant county attorney. And I think what we can do here is a request for quotes. It does not have to be competitive necessarily. So I can directly reach out to demo contractors and bring back a few quotes that will hopefully be more reasonable and make sure they're, you know, competitive and move forward so that, you know, when we put the costs in the, on the, we're going to assess the cost back from the property owner. So we want to make sure, one, those are reasonable for the county to pay and two, those are reasonable for the person to pay back.
Right.
Or, so that's where we're at. Hopefully we'll get something back in, in late January or early February for you.
Yeah, so if I'd make the motion that we reject the proposal that was received and uh, for the property cleanup and dump demolition of structures and debris removal at the said address and um, I'd like to direct staff to prepare requests for quotations and solicit bids for the work.
Second. Uh, Headens.
I.
Basil, I. Thank you. I know this has uh, been a, a long project in the midst of other long projects. So thank you both. Um, moving to consideration, discussion and consideration of Story County funding allocation for asset process for F Y twenty-four. Morning, Sandra.
I'm here to provide information on asset funding requests for F Y twenty-four and get the board's decision on the level of funding you want to make available to the asset process.
Okay.
Is that better?
Oh, yeah, much better.
Okay, sorry. You want me to start over? Please. I'm here to provide information on the asset funding requests for F Y twenty-four and get the board's decision on the level of funding you want to make available to the asset process. Uh, as you know, Story County partners with three other funders, United Way, City of Ames and I S U student government to fund human services in the county. Uh, the analysis of social services evaluation team or asset is the under umbrella under which the services are analyzed and funded. Funding requests for F Y twenty-four total one million nine hundred and two thousand, three hundred and one dollars or a thirteen percent increase over what you made available to the asset process last fiscal year. And on the um, I provided a memo and attachment for your information. The attachment is a spreadsheet that provides information on the agency's budgets uh, from last F Y. And also provides information on what they have requested, the difference, what percentage increase that is. And I also made some um, different comments in the margins to note new requests, uh, things of that nature. I do want to add, um, or bring your attention to line sixty-eight on page two of the spreadsheet. Uh, which is also a new request, the bridge home supportive housing, a new request for fifty thousand. I don't have that marked if that is a new request.
Oh, the supportive housing one is a new request, you said? Okay.
A new request, yes.
Oh, yeah, you have the note, you have a notation on it. So I appreciate you have clarification.
Mm hmm.
Just for my own clarification, we're not making specific decisions on individual requests, so.
No, you're not. I just wanted to bring to your attention which requests were new because most of these are continuing requests from year to year.
Right.
Um, but occasionally we do get requests from um, existing agencies, new agencies. There is one um, agency that's listed, uh, the community academy, which is a, a new agency to asset.
Mm hmm.
And there's uh, also a new request and some other requests from agencies that um were existing asset agencies, but have made some new requests to the county such as Campfire and the Y W C A.
Thank you. And then I also noticed in your uh, document that under admin services, they're looking for a four percent increase from each, from each of the agencies. I'm assuming
Excuse me?
Oh, sorry. I said, looking at the document that you provided too, it looks like um, they're looking for a four percent increase from all the, for administrative services. Is that from all the, is that from all the the entities then?
This would be, this would cover Story County's portion of those admin services. All funders are responsible for certain services.
Gotcha. Thank you. Well, I know the need is great out there. Um, I also know with the rising cost just for general county stuff is increasing and what we can afford or not afford. So I will just throw this out there for right now of looking at um uh, five percent, I, I'd make a motion for a five percent basic, general basic increase, five percent for local option and then the four percent for the administrative services. And it looks like you don't need an increase for public health is how I'm reading that, if I'm reading that.
Or for local.
That's correct. And we don't need uh, an increase for local option.
Oh, no, local option. I'm sorry.
If you just went with what you did last year, for example, um, that would cover everything and have a little leftover. Um, but
Yeah, so, okay, say, say that again. If we do everything from last year, wait, so you made a motion?
I did start to make a motion.
Okay.
Second for just
I'll, I'll second for sake of discussion. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I did make it as a motion.
So for local option, um, what is being requested this year is nineteen thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars, which is a decrease from what was available last year. So um, you do not need a request, uh, an increase for local option. But
Gotcha.
We have had unallocated funds um, in the process before.
So if I'm right then, so in a motion, it would just need to be I'm confused. I'm sorry. It'd be for general basic
Mm hmm.
For admins.
Right.
Am I correct on that?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't catch that earlier. So does that change anything from your thoughts of, of, and we could just vote it down, what I initially did and then we could
Well, we, we will have to because your motion included
Local option.
Um.
Why don't we just do that and then we could have further discussion that way, so we don't get more confused.
Okay.
Or if you're open to.
Yeah, that, that, yeah. Um, well, no, not yet. Okay, so a, a five percent increase, just like um, yeah, a five percent increase would be an increase of eighty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Um, and six And 6% would be 100,367, which is half rough, well, it's less than half. I'm sorry, 100,367. Plus some change.
Excuse me, when you do the motions, could you just do it in percentage?
Yes. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Absolutely. It's, it's easier for me to know what the numbers are that we're actually
Kind of looking.
Making a decision. Yeah.
Yeah, we might not have them exact, but.
Right, right.
What you had for general basic last year was 1,295,607 and you did an 8% increase last year.
So are you thinking higher than 5%?
Let me, let me ask this. If, if we were to, if we were to go with the 5% and there is an option for an agency to come forward if there's something that happens throughout the year, correct?
That option does always exist. Yes.
To make an additional request.
Yes.
My concern is heading into this budget session, not really having a good idea of what, what the next year is going to look like.
Right.
And having some concerns about what the next year is going to look like. But I agree. I know the need is great and now I'm looking at this 18% increase in request for general basic.
I do want to point out that not all agencies drew down their funding last fiscal year. So there was some funding left over.
Okay.
So the volunteers will take that into consideration along with each funder's priorities and other information when they make a recommendation. And I will be back to the board in February with those recommendations.
Okay, okay. Okay. So do we need to, okay, heads.
No.
Basal no.
So now for a second motion. Move to increase local basic by 5%.
General basic.
General basic, excuse me. General basic. And let no increase necessary for local option and no increase necessary for public health. And a 4% increase for admin services.
I would second. Any further discussion?
I just want to make sure. Does that clear?
Yes.
Okay.
Heads.
Aye.
Basal aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no departmental reports or other reports, any upcoming agenda items? Okay. Now it's time for public comment. Number two, comments from the public not on, on items, not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can raise your hand on Zoom or step forward to the table. Well, we have no one in the room. Looks like, was that one? Okay. Looks like Rosalyn.
Hi, it's Rosalyn.
Rosalyn. Sorry.
That's okay. I was just curious, and you might not be able to speak to this today, on the Ames City Council website, they talked about a study of the region there along 190th Street and talked as if they were adding on the land between 190th and 180th. Has that been decided by the board of supervisors and Gilbert that they are okay with that annexation?
So I believe that's in reference to the urban fringe and that is all still part of discussion. No, no votes have been made or decisions have been made.
Okay.
We, we actually voted to extend the urban fringe until April. I believe that Gilbert, I'm not sure if Gilbert has voted on that yet, but I believe Ames is having discussion on that tonight, tonight.
Good. Okay. Cause I thought it was January that they were going to try to make some decisions. So, all right. Thank you so much for that info.
You're welcome. Thank you so much. And did you get her name information? Rosalyn, would you mind sharing your last name and your city of residence?
No, she's still there.
Sorry, I had to unmute. It's Brandt, B as in boy, R-A-N-D-T. And we live at 6314 510th Avenue. So our address is Ames, but we're in the Gilbert School District.
Grab it. Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You bet.
Okay. So seeing, is there anyone else who would like to make public comment? Okay. Seeing no one, we will close public comment number two and move to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from supervisors.
Because of the impending weather, a number of my committees have been canceled that we're going to be in person. So I just wish folks a happy holiday and if you're traveling to be very cautious and safe.
I, I have a meeting in Des Moines this evening that is not going to be canceled, but luckily the snow is not coming yet. Um, yeah, most of the rest of my meetings are on Zoom and I wish everybody a safe and, and happy holiday also. Drive safely, stay warm, and I hope everybody gets to enjoy time with their families and friends. And with that, I move we adjourn. Second.
Heads.
Aye. Basal aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.